Hello and welcome to the Local Campaign. I'm Gord Martino from City News. Rogers TV is presenting unrivaled coverage of the municipal election with debates in all of Toronto's 44 wards. For the next hour, you're going to hear from the candidates of Ward 24, Willowdale. Before I introduce them, let's take a closer look at the ward.
Ward 24, Willowdale stretches between Young Street and Victoria Park Avenue and from Highway 401 and Finch Avenue north to Steels Avenue. Ward 24 has a population slightly over 62,000 with large Chinese and Middle Eastern communities. It includes the comfortable middle-class subdivisions of Willowdale and Bayview Village, lavish high-rise condominiums around Shepherd Avenue, Seneca College, and the light industrial area south of Steels Avenue between Highway 404 and Victoria Park Avenue. Willowdale has experienced significant growth during the past 10 years with an increase of new high-rise developments, particularly in the southern part of the ward. Landlord and tenant issues and the lack of efficient transit along Finch Avenue have been major issues of concern for voters in Ward 24.
Now, let's get it rolling as I give each candidate one minute for an opening statement, done in alphabetical order, and we will begin with Daniela Accera. Daniela.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniela Accera, and I really am -- it's a privilege to be able to serve Ward 24. I'm looking forward to work like from every corner of the Ward 24, including like the commercial, including like the housing, and like be able like to solve the major problem into the ward itself. My background as a real estate agent and be on seven years on a board of directors as a treasurer, that would be -- that practically help like to look at the budget and be able to make decisions and be able like to have different levels of people sitting at the table and negotiate like the best preposition and work together with the community. So I'm looking forward to listen to every single person from the young to the old, from the very wealthy person to the person that is in need, and basically make Ward 24 one of the best places to live in Toronto.
All right, thank you. Randy I, you're next.
My name is Randy I. Good evening, and I want to be your city councillor. I'm a lawyer by background. I've experienced in employment law, litigation, and municipal law. I am in love with Toronto. It's a great city. I feel deeply for my community. And I grew up in a hard-working immigrant Chinese family, and while growing up, I learned the values of hard work, of responsibility, of accountability. I want to bring these values to City Hall. Voting for me means voting for fiscal responsibility, voting for accountability, for transparency. As your city councillor, I will work hard for you, and I will ensure that Toronto is the best city in the world. Thank you.
Dan Fox.
It's time for change. Our community needs leadership, someone who shares our values, someone who will fight for us, someone who will work for us and focus on solving our challenges for a change. I'm Dan Fox, and I'm running to deliver results as our next city councillor. I'm running to bring integrity back to Willowdale, and I'm running to win. Our current councillor has proven that he's wrong for Willowdale. He still won't come clean about his secret sweetheart rental deal giving him a swanky midtown apartment below market rates. He was nowhere to be found when our homes were crippled by last winter's ice storm, and he still doesn't get why that was wrong. He won't talk about the for-profit lobbying work that he did while he was supposed to be working for us. And worst of all, he's delayed transit in this city by half a decade. It's time for change. It's time for us to move forward. Our families need more transit, less gridlock, better development through smarter planning and smarter growth, the protection and expansion of our parks, strengthened services, and real leadership. That's what I'll deliver.
Michael Gallia.
My name is Michael Gallia, and I'd like to be Willowdale's representative. I've lived in our community for 33 years and served as an architectural and community designer for the past 17. In that time, it's been my responsibility to mediate between landowners, local communities, and local governments to find mutually beneficial solutions to development issues. My success has been based on my ability to engage all stakeholders. I'm here today to talk about a vision for Willowdale, a vision where people from a diverse background and a wide variety of needs and aspirations can come together and live, work, and play locally, where we maintain a strong connection to the city but we reduce our dependency on it. I believe we can get there by taking four steps: by bringing order to the transit debate, by allowing communities to drive the planning process, by restoring the public's faith in our ability to deliver capital projects, and by always looking back, never afraid to question our outcomes and seek a better future.
David Shiner.
Hi, I'm David Shiner, and I am so pleased to be running for reelection as councillor for Ward 24, Willowdale. I know this community well. Having lived in Willowdale for almost 25 years, being raised my family here and having so many friends around the ward, I have always put your interests first when representing our community. I have delivered on my promises to keep taxes low, to end the vehicle transfer tax, to build a new community center, and to stand with my community against overdevelopment. I have always championed subways and voted and supported the Shepherd subway line. I'm so pleased when I go around the ward to see so many residents and families using the parks that I've created and enhanced, and I am looking forward to returning to be your strong voice at City Council this fall. Thank you.
All right, now that we've met the candidates, we are now going to begin our question-and-answer period of the debate. Each candidate will be given 30 seconds to respond to a specific question, and after all of the candidates have responded to that question, we'll get into the discussion aspect of it. Now, the first question. "Willowdale has experienced significant growth during the past 10 years with an increase of new high-rise developments. This has led to increased traffic and congestion as a result. Does development need to slow down, and what are your ideas to help ease traffic and congestion in Ward 24?" I'll begin with you, Daniela.
I notice that in the city, two main things that help like for congestion. One is like to create a lane for buses, like of course, like it's very important for the construction, the subway on Finch, to move things faster, and synchronize lights. So every -- so basically, I will love to look into it in all different aspects and like in engineers how to basically run the congestion very fast.
Okay. We have in Toronto a second-class transportation system, a second-class subway, second-class ground and rail transportation. We are a world-class city, but our infrastructure is lagging behind. We've been talking about the issues of subway construction and increased subway lines for many years. It's time to act on those promises. It's time for City Council to get together and solve these issues once and for all. I want to be your voice in transportation. I want to do that for you.
Dan.
I'll try to answer your question about the development in the ward. We have a great deal of development that's happened over the last few years. Most of it's residential development, and it's great that the ward is growing and thriving, but what we're lacking is commercial and office and retail development. And when you build, you need to build a complete community, and a complete community includes office and retail and commercial development that has been lacking in the last 10 years.
Michael.
Well, transit has been touted as our savior for congestion and the relief to development, to increase density, but it's only a part of that solution because with transit expansion comes more development. We're actually obligated by the province to do so. And in doing so, we need to change the shape of that development because with more homes, with more condos, come more drivers as well as more transit users. So we need to focus on building Willowdale as a complete community where people can live, work, and play locally.
David.
That's a good question, and I've met with my residents and taken them to meet with city staff, and we have one recently. I've got the general manager for traffic in North York, the manager for traffic in the city, the city planner, and the deputy city manager all to agree to a study the council approved this summer to look at ways to mitigate the impacts from development and move traffic in the corridor. We have to do a better job when we're approving new development, and we have to build subways to move the people that are coming out of those new developments along Shepherd Avenue and up Young Street to relieve the problem in our ward.
Okay, let's open the floor. Does anybody have any comments or suggestions?
The councillor mentioned subways, and we have a subway on Shepherd, but the new developments that have been approved right at the subway stations include parking spaces, so people are still going to drive, and Shepherd is already congested beyond its capacity. And so we're -- the more development, the more residential development that we get, the worse that situation is going to become.
Well, we have a subway on Shepherd and specifically the Eastern Line, which very few people use. It costs a ton to put it in, and nobody's using it, so why do we need more subways?
Gord, the subway wasn't finished. It was supposed to go from Young Street over to the Downview Station, give that cross loop right over so people can get off Young and go down the University Line. As well, everyone who moves in still has a car. You can't get everywhere in North York and in this area by subway.
They have a car because you have developments with --
I didn't interrupt you.
They have a car because you have developments with parking spaces.
Please. I didn't interrupt you. Everyone that moves in has a car, and in those developments where there weren't even enough parking spaces for each of the units, they park on the road, and they create problems for all the neighbors, and we get complaints, and those people contact us. It's only realistic to understand that when you're living in a community like Willowdale, you want a car if it's for evenings or going to the country, you're going shopping. You can't do everything on a five-station subway stop, and you can't always go downtown with it. So you have to have a good transportation system that works, and the subway system was never finished.
Randy.
I think it's important to finish that subway system. Again, we've been talking and talking and talking, using excuses for many years. Why do we not have a subway system that goes all the way to York University? Why do we not have a subway line that runs to the airport? I think these are very important things that people in Toronto deserve, and they want these things, and we want them now.
Daniela.
I believe like in needs and resolving those needs. So like we need to study exactly what time like there is the traffic, the amount of traffic, then like make lanes specifically, for example, like for buses, you know, like to move faster, and basically according to the study, like move accordingly.
Does it have to be a subway or can it be an LRT? I mean, to build a subway takes far longer periods of time to get it established than an LRT. Any opinions?
We can build both. Subways and LRTs provide very different outcomes under very different situations. Where you're looking to draw a connection between the people who are traveling to the community, then LRT is definitely the best way to go. You're above ground, they're great for short trips, and they allow people to jump on and off of the tram like you would in a centralized area where you can actually shop or enjoy the community, basically. Subways are more suited to moving a lot of people a long distance really quickly, and that's what we need where we're connecting to the core, basically.
Gord, Toronto needs a world-class subway system through the whole city, something I've advocated ever since I came on council, and if you know my history, I was out there protesting for the Spadina subway line and the Spadina Expressway when I was much younger. We need a good transportation system, and I was there when the Spadina line was built and the Shepherd line was built, the Spadina line was extended, but recently, there hasn't been a cooperation between the three levels of government to get them built. That is what we need.
Increasingly in a situation where politicians have passed the buck, let the next guy figure it out. This subway system, in the opinion of a great many people, should have been tackled 40 years ago. We stopped building subways because people kept playing games with how much money it would cost. Various levels of government said, "Yeah, we can afford it." Others said, "No." So how do we pick up the speed here and get these things done?
Well, we need to build transit now, and good transit includes all modes of transit: subways, light rail, buses, but we need to move ahead with the plans that we already have. There's no war on the car, there's no war between subways and LRTs. A good transit plan includes subways, LRTs, and buses depending on the density of an area. We need to look carefully at each area where we're going to build transit and build the appropriate transit for the density in that area, and so that way we won't have these big empty subway stations that nobody uses, spending billions of dollars on, and instead build the appropriate transit for each area.
Michael.
I think that we need to dedicate funding first and foremost, right? We need to dedicate at least the 1.5% tax increase that we saw recently to fund the Scarborough subway. That has to be an ongoing dedicated transit fund. Add to that a portion of the land transfer tax and then other revenue tools as well, as well as a portion of development charges, so that we can fund, start building, and keep building because we are way behind, and the longer we wait, the more expensive it will get.
And we can't go it alone. We've had several billion dollars earmarked for subway construction now, but that's only in the interim. We need to keep going. Where's the money going to come from, David?
Absolutely, Gord. I have always advocated for an annual funding in the city for public transit, and I'm hoping with the new mayor, we'll be able to get it, which means the city has to budget every year for the construction of one kilometer of subway. Whether it's either plan that each of them have, you have to have a master plan for the city. You have to budget that. You have to show your monies on the table, and then at least you'll be able to say, "I've funded four kilometers in one term, eight kilometers in two terms," and if you get the cooperation of the federal provincial governments, you can double and triple that. But you need the money there in place first to be able to build it, and that's what I have always supported and hoping with my experience, and with the new mayor, we'll be able to bring that funding in.
And everybody's talking subways, and again, let's get back to LRT. It's a lot less expensive to build, and you could build more of it in a much shorter period of time. Is that the way to go?
Yes, that's absolutely --
I would disagree. That's the way to go as a definitive answer. Our issue with LRTs is it often works for some communities, but for other communities, it's a bandage solution. If we build subways now, if we keep the promises that we made to the citizens of Toronto to have a world-class subway system, we would have a world-class subway system in 10 years or maybe in 15 years, and we would stop the debate once and for all, and we would have the infrastructure for our future generations.
All right, Dan, you were saying?
We need a world-class transit system that includes subways and also light rail and buses because every mode of transit is appropriate for certain areas. It depends on the density of the area, on city planning guidelines, on the official plan, but you need to adhere to those guidelines and respect the advice that you get from city staff and from experts about transit planning.
Daniela.
I think it's very important to build subways because subways in no city has ever gone wrong with it, and it's good to go with a budget and like start to construct them so that we move like people really fast. And one privilege of the subway that they are underground, so when we have a problem like, for example, the ice storm, we're not going to have like all LRTs, you know, that they're going to be stalled or like buses that are going to be stalled into the snow. We know the subway they actually run because we have nine months of bad weather.
I disagree. I don't think that subways are in any way immune to severe weather. We've seen rain events where subway stations have been flooded entirely and shut the entire line down, and these are systems that connect our entire city, right? We need to stop thinking of transit in terms of systems that were built 50 years ago, and that's what world-class cities that have transit subway systems are. They built their systems a long time ago, and we need to stop looking at the cliches that dominate the transit debate about what we've already seen. We need to engage specialists, we need to engage people like MetroLinks to look at new solutions, to look at solutions that meet our outcomes. That's where council can play the role here. We need to determine what we need and what our outcomes should be, and then let specialists propose options for meeting those outcomes.
Want to say something, David?
Yes, Gord. If we're talking Willowdale, no. Can you imagine an LRT going up the middle of Young Street with the traffic being then pushed into all the communities that already have a bad problem, or Finch Avenue, that's at a disaster now, bringing it down to one lane each direction?
So it's subway-only, right?
So you have to have a subway system in those areas as well. LRTs aren't the be-all and save-all. St. Clair has a subway line, a streetcar line, not an LRT, but the LRT in Edmonton is going to have a stop at Bayview, a stop at Laird, and a stop at Leslie. The people in between don't have any service anymore, and yet, they're not going to be able to drive across the streets from one side of Edmonton to the other because of the barrier the subway creates. It's been a disaster in part of St. Clair, so they only can go into areas where they fit and where they can work and where they won't obstruct the traffic because up in Willowdale, we're still quite car-dependent on our three main arteries: Shepherd, Finch, and Steels, and our north and south orders being Young, Bayview, Leslie, and Don Mills.
I disagree entirely. St. Clair did make a mistake. There were mistakes made with St. Clair, and it's Caledonia Road. But before you hit Caledonia Road, east of Caledonia Road, in fact, traffic has decreased. Half my family lives in that neighborhood, and I live out here. I commute up St. Clair frequently, and I have for many years, to be honest. The advanced U-turns there have increased traffic flow significantly. It's actually much better than it was. I know there is negative connotations associated with it, and the second you hit that backlog caused by the intense bottleneck at Caledonia Road, which was foolish because, I mean, it only extends another, I don't know, maybe a kilometer up the road. I don't see why it wasn't just ended at Caledonia Road, and we would have had a much better solution.
Daniela.
I think subway, there is still like one of the major things to work with because when do we have the problem? Rush hour, for example, like in the morning, in the afternoon, we know that we have a large amount of people to move all in once. The new subway, for example, like you have like, they're marvelous. Like you can move from the front all the way to the back, so you can have like people coming all in once and travel to the back and find a nice seat. So like that's what the major problem is, a rush hour, working this, or for example, like a long weekend. So we need to study exactly when people they need to move and go with it. And of course, a combination like in the Willowdale area, like the subway that will do a lot and make lanes for cars, just for cars, people more, with more than two people aboard on the car.
So you mean like an express lane, like Diamond Lane?
An express lane, yeah, for rush hours.
Okay, anybody else?
If you look at the number of subway lines we have in the city, it's embarrassing. We have one line that goes across, one line that loops, and then we have a four-stop Shepherd line, and that's it for a city of 4 million people with more people coming in. There is a lack of political will to get the job done, and that has to change.
I just wanted to point out that earlier, we were talking about light rail, and suddenly we started talking about St. Clair, which is not light rail. St. Clair is a streetcar, and by confusing those, it's used as ammunition to point out where light rail doesn't work when in fact, it's not an LRT, it's a streetcar. What we have on Englington is going to be LRT, and portions of that are going to be underground, which is the best compromise, I think.
Okay, moving it along, cutting waste and holding the line on the city budget were dominant issues in the last election. Do you feel there are more efficiencies to be found in city operations, and what do you think can be improved? Rob Ford has talked about efficiencies for years now. Are there more efficiencies to be found? 30 seconds.
Yes, there are always efficiency. I always believe like in sitting down at the table and see where this efficiency can be found. Like, for example, in the garbage, we know like that on the west end has been privatized, and that worked extremely well. On the other end, on the east end, like the owner seems to be happy with the services. They only had a few issues, for example, with the recycling, but we want to always be at the bargaining table and see which one is the best way. We want to save money, but we want to have the best services. We want to ensure like there won't be any strikes, and so again, work on the contracts.
Okay, Randy.
The city has a gigantic and clumsy bureaucracy. If we want to find efficiencies, we need to first start with city staff, and we need to go through that clumsy structure and figure out what things, programs, and people we need to cut. It's quite simple. Our city is not running because our city has become this clumsy, clumsy machine. Also, we need to look at councillors' salaries. Councillors are making $100,000 that should be cut by half.
Dan.
There are always efficiencies. Any large organization has efficiencies to be found, but presenting it as some kind of solution to our budget problems, for example, cutting council salaries would save such a tiny percentage of the city budget that it doesn't represent any significant savings. You could build 10 meters of subway if you cut all of council, but it doesn't get us anywhere in terms of actually saving money. We spend a lot of effort, we spend a lot of time talking about saving money. The last election was all about that. We have a mayor who focused only on trying to save money. It turns out, he's ended up costing us more. So I think that, yes, there are efficiencies, but there are other things we need to do as well.
Michael.
In terms of our operating budget, I think we're pretty strapped. I think Joe Panichetti and many others have commented that we are an incredibly lean organization. Our budget is very low based on our population, our operating budget. However, capital projects, we've lost the faith, the public's faith in delivering capital projects. Union Station, for example, $300 million over budget. That's 3%, more than 3% of our, this year's operating budget in Toronto. The Sony Center, all sorts of other projects. We have a horrible reputation, and I think we need to realize when we're out of our depth in terms of managing a project, we need to seek outside help, people who actually have a reputation, like MetroLinks, for example, for delivering on time and on budget.
David.
Well, the projects that we talked about, Union Station, the Sony Center, were started under the former mayor, David Miller. They were started with 65% engineering. They cost the city and taxpayers money, and as Chair of the Government Management Committee, I ran in recommendations to change that, so that will never happen again. But I've also brought to council's attention, to the public's attention, that we have a surplus of over $200 million a year because we have over 2,500 vacant positions in the city. Now, if they're vacant, do we really need them? And should that surplus that we have not go into funding our needs or into producing and being able to budget for transit? We can always find efficiencies, and I've done that. I've done line-by-line reviews on the Budget Committee and Chair of the Budget Committee. I know there are more savings out there. You can always find ways to work better. Look at examples where in North York, things are processed quickly, and in other parts of the city, they may take longer, and we have never really amalgamated those divisions to find what we're doing best in the four different districts of Toronto.
Okay, let me hold you there. General discussion, go ahead.
I would disagree. I think I've seen presentations at Build Ontario where people are talking about how things are being actually better coordinated, and these vacancies, they need to be filled. I file applications with the City of Toronto frequently, and recently, to raise the roof of an existing building, it actually took 120 days. That was what was scheduled automatically for the system to respond to that. And then we wonder why developers aren't willing to sit down and talk to us. It's because they're tired of the system. It's because it's taking too long and it's far too costly. We need to fill those roles. We have 100% cost recovery system that's being implemented now. There is no reason, user fees will pay these people's bills based on the system that's been implemented by Mr. Ford, and there's no reason why these positions should go unfilled and why the public should have to wait for services from the city.
Dan.
Absolutely, we need to fill the positions. I happen to agree with Michael here. Filling those positions, those are also jobs and jobs that pay well, which is good for the economy in the city. So I think that filling those positions is something that's good for the city, and cutting them, as the councillor suggests, is bad for the economy in the city, is not something that I would suggest.
Daniela.
Yes, I do believe like that some quality job, they need to exist, and in terms like a technology changes all the time, so we can find a way to actually see efficiency in many different operating accounts and many contracts.
I think there's a laziness issue with some of the employees at the City of Toronto and the services they're delivering to the people who are essentially paying them because we, the taxpayers, are paying for the city employees. We're not getting the services we deserve, and that needs to change immediately.
So you feel that people aren't working hard enough yet?
I just want to clarify that. I've brought to the attention 2,500 vacant positions and said, "Hire them or cut taxes." And it's important to look at that because with almost 40,000 employees, we can't find efficiencies, and we don't have to hire all those people. Where there are areas that were missing employees, where services were slow, I'm the first one to push, and I've pushed the city manager to fill those. But in areas where it's duplication and where we can do better by looking at better processes to do that, we shouldn't just be spending money to hire those people because you can do better, and you can always look at what you're doing and find a better way.
Let's get to another question, the fourth question now, as the panel continues its discussions. According to the Institute of Municipal Finance and Governance, Toronto has a revenue problem, not a spending problem. What ideas do you have to generate new sources of revenue without raising taxes?
First of all, we need to look at the commercial, and as was mentioned before, like Willowdale needs a little bit more commercial. So what do we do? We need to study the area, where we can actually bring business into it, which is going to generate jobs, which is going to generate revenue, and basically, like the budget will be able to have a surplus on that.
I think what's really disappointing for me is that the province and the federal government has reneged on many of its promises. Toronto should be getting a lot more money from our provincial and federal governments to support our people, to support our economy. We are the largest, most vibrant, most economically developed city in the country, and we need the money coming in from our levels of government that need to support us, and it's not happening.
I agree with the institute that we do have a revenue problem, but generating revenue without raising taxes or generating revenue without taxes, I don't see how it's possible because revenue coming into the city is coming from the economy. That's taxes. Whatever form it takes, whether it's property taxes or land transfer tax or user fees, which are another kind of tax, all of the revenue coming into the city is some form of taxes. So it's not possible to increase revenues without raising some form of taxes.
I think we look at the development challenge again, basically. I think we look at the development challenge again, basically. We have a situation where we have, the majority of development is residential right now. We have these massive condo towers with just a little bit of residential on the ground, or commercial, sorry, retail even, on the ground floor. I think we need to fill some of that residential space with commercial space and find areas to build a little more industrial and revitalize our industrial district because we charge a much higher tax rate to these organizations, for commercial properties and for industrial properties. So this would be one revenue source. And there are many more, but I think we need to break it down. We need to look at development charges. We need to make sure taxes pay for operating budget, property taxes, sorry, and development charges pay for new infrastructure, as intended.
David.
Well, there's two parts to our budget, Gord. The part that where we collect taxes to deliver city services and the part where we get revenue from the other governments to deliver their services. When it comes to delivering the city services, we charge the cost of those services and we're good. We manage it there. We shouldn't have to raise taxes. But when it comes to trying to manage Toronto community housing, which has hundreds of millions of dollars of repairs in place, when it comes to trying to deal with our social services, with our children's services, with our public health, and all the services that the city delivers on behalf of the province and the federal government, where their funding has not kept pace with inflation, is where the city has to continue trying to find ways to get that revenue, and it shouldn't be from the property taxpayer. I don't think we should be raising property taxes more than the cost of living. That's all that people can afford, and we have to find it internally and get the funding from our partners for the services that we deliver for them.
Daniel.
I strongly believe like into businesses. We shall stimulate businesses because businesses like they'll be able to hire people and generate revenue. There are many different ways to do so, but in one of the ways is through education. How can we improve those businesses? How can we generate more revenue themselves so they'll be able to pump it into the community and into the city itself?
What about selling things that we have? A lot of the housing and a lot of the structures that the City of Toronto owns could easily be sold off. What about selling off Toronto Hydro, as Karen Spence suggested? These are sources of revenue. Any opinion on that?
Myself, I believe always to sit down on the table because we need to see what kind of job we lose, the quality, and if we're going to do it, are we going to do a partial part of it? And how we can actually make hydro more affordable for the people and like how can we bring more revenue into it.
Randy.
I think selling certain properties and privatizing some services are essential for the survival of the city and for the delivery of quality services to people who deserve high-quality services. If we get stuck with the bureaucracy, we get stuck with the sense of entitlement, then services are going to lag, and taxpayers, the citizens of Toronto, deserve better.
Selling city assets to pay for services is like selling the furniture to pay the mortgage. Eventually, you run out of things to sell and you still have to deliver the services. So it might appear to be a good solution in the short term, but it's not sustainable. It's not something you can keep doing. And so it doesn't make sense to me that we give away our assets, which can be used to generate revenue in other ways, or are necessary to provide services to people just in order to balance the budget in the short term.
Again, liquidating assets is not a solution to operating costs. Some of these assets do generate revenue for us, and to eliminate that revenue is a short-term solution. Again, you know, liquidating assets is when the writing is on the wall that a business is doing poorly. I don't think Toronto is doing poorly. I think we can work to achieve our goals without pawning off our assets.
David.
Well, Gord, the city actually has and is going through the real estate that we have and looking at ways to sell it, but not a wild sell. We actually transfer that over to Build Toronto when we look at it to enhance the value. For example, there's a youth shelter that I serve on the board of and have for a decade that's downtown. They're in an old fire hall and an old police station that we didn't need anymore, and they were occupying that. We found that if we gave that to Build Toronto, Build Toronto could actually sell that property from the range of $35 million, and we weren't using it. And we took $5 million of that to relocate the youth shelter to another city building. It was a win-win. There are ways to generate revenue from the properties that we have and other properties in downtown Toronto we've also sold, where we have taken them and changed them and rezoned them to meet the current demands and made money. Just look at the corner of York Mills and Young Street. There's a TTC parking lot. That parking lot could be underground, and you could sell the real estate. Parking lot could be operated by the Toronto Parking Authority, and there could be an office building on top or a residential building on top, and we would gain that revenue. So there are some assets that we can sell, but no such thing as a fast sale of all the assets in the city, and nothing that would in any way hurt our ability to operate properly and run an efficient organization.
Dan.
The solution that you proposed there, to sell that asset to generate revenue, if it's a good solution, then why haven't you done it? You've been the councillor for 20 years. If there are solutions, if there are things that should be done, then why haven't they been done?
But they have been done, Dan. If you would look at my record, you'd find how many properties I was involved in. I just showed you the one in downtown Toronto, and it was a win-win. To save it for the youth shelter, build a wonderfully new facility, we moved them actually to a site on Adelaide Street. We gave them part of the building, and we're selling the rest of the site. We are selling real estate, and I am working through these divisions, and I have been very successful in that. And if you'd look at the city's track record in doing that and look at the issues that really affect our residents, you'd see that's being done.
Michael, you have something you wanted to say.
Yeah, I mean, just going back to his example of providing public parking in office buildings, coming from that industry, parking is an incredibly contentious issue already. How you allocate that parking is also incredibly contentious. And in the end, I don't think it's even feasible to contemplate that. It's not a win at all because the depth that one would have to dig is increased, right? Parking is really expensive. Underground parking is really expensive. And right now, above-ground parking for Toronto Parking Authority, as I understand it, is about a break-even task. So it's not a means of generating revenue.
In due respect.
Move along to the next question.
Projects around the city where it's really been successful.
Over the last two terms, we have seen a very divided council that pits left against right, downtown against the suburbs. So what do you think needs to be done to unite council? This is a very contentious issue in the current election campaign among the mayoral favorites. What would you do to unite council?
It's very simple. There are always commonalities, you know? So we want to see why is that this councillor complaining? What is your problem? How can we solve this problem? Find solution, find commonality, because each one of us, we want solutions. So I believe in, you know, be able to communicate together.
Well, there's a simple answer. You replace them. We have councillors who've been there for way too many years, and they've built up bad blood, they've built up factions, and it's time for a wholesale replacement of these councillors with new blood, new people, new individuals who want to participate in democracy, and let's get it done.
It is time for change. We do need change on council, but we also need to replace councillors with people who have a track record, as I do, of working with people from different political views. I have members of my team from different political views, and working together and bringing the best ideas to the table is how we can achieve that.
I think the contentious issues in council have been more about councillors sort of plucking ideas out of the air, basically pushing ideas. It isn't so much about left versus right. It's really been more about LRT versus subways and things like that. I think we need to look at our decision-making process and have everyone sit down and discuss what are the outcomes that we want to achieve. And I think you'll find that there is a lot more common ground there than we're made to believe based on the way the debate's been happening. So I think we need to frame our challenges differently, and when we look at it from a root cause perspective, we're going to find that we have a lot of common ground.
Dave.
Well, my track record is working with everyone on council, left, right, and center, which is where I stand. I've always been able to find the support that I need to champion the values and the issues that affect our community. And it's a good thing to look at if you really watch council, under the top debates where the mayor may be involved in bringing up some issues. And there's been a lot of controversy with his actions over the last couple of years. Council really works. Things do get done. The city does move forward, and I'm able to bring that group together. And I did, as Chair of the Budget Committee, do the same thing with members from the left, members from the right. We brought everybody's focus there when Mel Assen was mayor, and we're able to work cohesively on council.
You want to say something?
Well, I have to point out that it's not just the mayor's behavior that's been contentious, but also his views. And you voted with the mayor councillor over 80% of the time. And by sticking with the mayor and his group and supporting the mayor, you've been part of the problem there with the two different camps on council and not working together with everyone on council.
Again, you should actually look and not misrepresent what my votes are. I'm a fiscal conservative. I sit in the middle and I look for financial efficiency. And if the mayor has an issue that will save taxpayers money, like privatizing garbage on the east side of Young Street, or if he's working to put subways in the city, of course, I'm going to vote for him. But I don't vote with him on issues where he's wrong, and he knows that. And I don't vote on issues that will hurt my community. So I think if you're going to make statements, it shouldn't be based on percentages. In pulling things out of the air and making up stories, it should be on actual facts, looking at the votes, and seeing what the results were and those votes were. And you haven't done that.
Daniel, you wanted to say something?
Right now, we shouldn't look at the past any longer, but look at the future. So if this is going to be a new council, we need to work together. I believe that every person has a talent, you know? For example, a person can look into the small savings. There is another one that has, for example, a project. So I think in working together and maximize the talent of each person so that we can basically together, you know, bring like the best out of the city and make Toronto like the best.
What about if we just cut council on half? I mean, the suggestion has been made, you know, we got 44 councillors, maybe we only need 22. David?
Gord, if you want to join me in my office for one day and see the number of emails that we get, constituents' concerns that we have, my office opens at 8:30 every morning and closes at 5:00, and my staff are busy all day long responding to people and taking care of their problems. I don't have voicemail. I do it live, and I'm proud of that. So we have people that are in there, and if you want to take the board and make it now, 120,000 people to deal with those services, it's going to be very, very difficult to manage and provide what you want.
I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Shiner on this one. Toronto's 44 councillors, each councillor represents more constituents than any other city in Ontario, possibly the country. I haven't investigated it that far, but we can't weaken our democracy. It is a councillor's responsibility to represent their constituents. And if the broader we spread that out, the more thin we spread that, then the less representation they're going to get.
Cutting council in half is a red herring. It's a distraction. It wouldn't actually save money because each councillor would need twice as many staff. So I don't see it as the solution to any problem. I see it as something that people raise when they're trying to distract from the real problems that the city faces.
Randy.
I like that idea. I think we have 44 people who are arguing with each other right now, who can't get anything done. Let's cut it by 22. Let's cut it by half, and maybe that will give council an incentive to say, look, voters are going to vote you out if you don't work together. So there's an incentive, get your stuff together, let's get the job done.
Daniel.
I believe in efficiencies. We have like a big city that needs representation, and we want to make sure that representation has a quality. The revenue of the city is about $13 billion. Like the councillor, they take just a minimum part of it. Of course, if it's going to be an issue for the residents, we want to always bring that to the negotiating table and be able to see if fees are efficient or not to be able to do so.
So as I see it, it's an image issue, whereas a lot of people say, yeah, let's cut council in half. Those guys are lazy, they're overpaid, you know, the cut the waste thing and stop the gravy train that Rob Ford has been talking about. How do you improve the image of councillors so that the numbers are not cut in half? David.
Well, I've always been honest, integrity, and commitment with my ward. I know my community well, and I'm there with them. When I walk around the ward, I'm very pleased when people come up, say hello, and talk about the matters that we've done for them. But there are some problems with the debates that we've had at councils and issues where people are trying to rail people up and stand on particular issues, and that has to stop. We have to get back to the business of running the city. It's not something I do, and you'll notice I don't get into those debates. I deal with the issues that affect running the city and the issues that affect my constituents.
Yeah, because the electorate is suspicious that, you know, nothing is getting done at City Hall because you guys, all you do is argue all day and nothing moves forward. So...
Well, leadership and democracy in general is an argument to some extent. It just basically depends on how you characterize the debate, really. I mean, there are going to be people with different views in any democracy.
Of course, but there is inertia, isn't there?
Absolutely, there's inertia. And I mean, we have to, again, break it down to outcomes that we need to achieve and then deliver on those outcomes. That's really the problem.
Actually, I agree with the councillor that it is about integrity, and the lack of integrity that he showed by accepting a midtown apartment at below-market rents from a developer is part of the problem. That's an example of where we're not having constructive conversation because of distractions like that and the other integrity issues with our councillor.
Gord, I'd have to respond to that because that's a matter of privilege over here. Mr. Fox is incorrect. I did not accept a midtown apartment like that. I moved many years ago, and I've paid market rent, and the articles, I'll say that. And to run a campaign on misinformation to people and trying to have one of those mudslinging campaigns is not what people in Willardale look for. They look for you to come forward and tell them what you're going to do, how you're going to stand with their issues, and what you're going to do for them. And you shouldn't go out trying to be one of those US-style politicians throwing mud around at everybody. My record stands for itself. Commitment, integrity for the people of my ward.
Randy.
I would introduce term limits for city councillors to eight terms. After eight terms, I think it just becomes a job. City councillors just go to work. They forget about the people, they forget the enthusiasm, they just want a paycheck. So let's limit it to eight terms. At the end of your, sorry, eight years, rather, at the end of your eight years, you're out. New group of people come in.
Wait a second. So you're saying eight years is the maximum?
Eight years is max. Two terms, eight years.
Not eight terms?
Sorry, not eight terms, eight years.
That's 32 years.
Oh, that's a long time, Gord.
That's almost like being sent to jail.
That's like dinosaur years.
All right, Daniel.
Again, I believe into people get the idea together. Every person brings an idea on the table, and then it's to be taken in consideration because every person is be able to bring something on the table. I don't believe like in city hall, there have been huge arguments, because I've been sitting like at your city council many, many times. Sometimes there is nobody in the audience, and actually goes very, very smooth, everything, you know, like, so I think everybody can reach an agreement.
Okay. David?
I thought I spoke about that.
No. Do you think the limit should be placed on councillors? You can serve only eight years? That's it, two terms?
Gord, I wouldn't put a limit. The issue that I have now, and one of the reasons I'm running again, is the lack of the history in council. Our city managers leaving, our deputy city managers leaving, we've lost other staff, members of council are leaving. And when people come in to speak to me about issues in the ward, I know the community. I know the parks, I know the ravines, I know the histories, I know the projects, I know the official plan and what it was meant to say, I know all the developments, I know the densities, I know the people that live nearby. And when someone comes to speak to me about a community, I can say, but this is what they think. And they'll say, well, I didn't hear that. And I'll say, I'll organize a meeting, and people will come out and issue and talk about their problems with them, and that's what they hear. So you have to, as well, in every organization, have some change, and you also have to be able to remember and bring forward the issues that you've dealt with, because a lot of our staff are gone, have moved to other places, and people do appreciate that and the knowledge that I bring to them in these issues.
Michael. Michael?
I don't think you need to be a councillor to have that kind of relationship with the community. I was born at North York General. I went to St. Tim's. I've been in the neighborhood for 33 years, left for a very short period because of school and family, but came back. You don't need to be a councillor to have that kind of relationship, and we need to limit it to eight terms or to eight years, sorry, two terms, because unfortunately, it's contributing to voter apathy. I walk around nowadays, and while I'm knocking on doors, what I hear from a lot of people is, why not David Shiner? Well, I don't think that should be the question. I think the question should be, why David Shiner? Why Dan Fox? Why Mike Gally? Why Randy? Why Daniela? Right? People should be looking at the options and seeing what's out there. But unfortunately, right now, the easiest solution is just to vote for the incumbent.
Let's move on to the hot seat portion of the program. This is the way it's going to work. You have cards in front of you. One says yes, one says no, and one says abstain. So I will ask a question, and you will hold up the card that accurately reflects your position on the issue. If you think the answer is yes, that's what you do. If you think it's no, if you don't want to take part in that particular question, you will hold up abstain. Now, are you in favor of expanding the runways at Billy Bishop Airport? Give you a second to get your cards organized. Yes, yes, no, no. David? It's a reluctant yes. Okay. Daniela, why?
Yes, I believe, and I work downtown Toronto. We have a large business financial district, so we can move faster, business people faster. And of course, we can put restrictions on, so. And again, like, it would be really nice, for example, like if we put a one jet that's on weekend, we can just go down south for a couple days so that we can have efficiency at work because I know winter time is so long.
Okay, Randy?
Yeah, I got to apologize for the people who live on the island. I empathize with you. I know it's noisy, but expanding those runways, expanding that airport, it's good for the economy, it's good for jobs, it's good for Toronto, so take one for the team.
I don't think we need to expand the airport runways right now. We have a link from Union Station opening to Pearson Airport next year, and we need to protect our waterfront. That is a crown jewel of our city. We need to build the waterfront. And the cost, we would be spending public infrastructure dollars basically to the benefit of one company, to benefit Porter Airlines, and I think those infrastructure dollars could be better spent.
Michael?
I think that the benefits that Daniela mentions are already offered by Porter right now, and in the end, the plan just isn't consistent with our plan for Ontario Place and the waterfront. And quite frankly, we've already spent a whole lot of money and we've committed a whole lot of money to this development, and it's contrary to that investment prospering. So we can't just keep flipping back and forth with our priorities.
And David, your answer is yes. Why?
There is no yes or no at the moment in time from me or on council because there were so many questions that were asked about the proposal that Porter put forward that we're still waiting for responses to in the new year. There are problems down there with the taxis and what's access. There are issues with the number of flights and the caps on the flights that may be in place that we may be able to negotiate. There's an issue of noise, and the question, is the new jet that they're suggesting the same noise as the turboprops? And if they are, then they're just larger planes carrying more people to an airport that's functioning well. And I supported Porter going in and expanding that airport in the first place and having the bridge there. It has been a tremendous success for people that live anywhere that's not close to the airport because getting out to the airport even from Willowdale now is horrible. You can get downtown on the subway line and you can get on to a Porter flight, but if you want to get to the airport, you're stuck in traffic forever.
Let's move along to the other questions.
You can't answer it until we get the answers to the questions.
Would you be in favor of eliminating the land transfer tax? So that's a yes, a no, or a maybe? Let's have your answers. Yes, yes, no, no, yes. Okay, Daniela, why?
It's very important because young family, they're being driven away from Toronto. We want to bring this young family back into Toronto because a young family are like the business of the city, like work, children, and that's how the city is run.
This is just another unfair tax imposed by government upon people. We had the HST, we have these crazy taxes that come along, and then they stay, and then we get accustomed to it. They're unfair, and they should be eliminated.
I'm going to say no because you've only asked half of a question. Eliminating the land transfer tax would either require raising property taxes by 15% or cutting services by $300 million. So if you want to ask about raising property taxes and eliminating the land transfer tax or eliminating the land transfer tax and which services and indicate which services you would then cut, then it's a question that could be answered. But simply eliminating the land transfer tax, it's not possible because the city has to balance the budget.
Even after you factor the land transfer tax, the annual revenues from the land transfer tax into property taxes, Toronto's residential tax rate with land transfer tax factored into it is still the lowest in the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and we have the most costly challenges before us. And in the end, I think it's actually a good concept. It's a tax deferral. We're still attracting people because of our overall low residential tax rate, even with this included. And in the end, it gives people the opportunity not to pay this bill quarterly. They pay it when they sell their asset, and they have access to their capital.
David?
Well, they don't really pay it when they sell. They pay it when they buy, and I would definitely eliminate it. It is a punitive tax on young families that are trying to establish themselves and hopefully move up into a condominium or a small house, or on seniors that may be selling the one access to downsize and want to move into something smaller, but getting out of one house to another, they've got to pay not 2% but 4% in tax. So I would see eliminating both the provincial tax, which gives us no services, and the city tax. And I believe we may have to do it now over a little bit of time, but I believe it's something that can be done and should be done.
Let's move along to the next question. Would you support a recall system that would allow the public to remove elected officials and force an election? Yes, no, or maybe? Yes, yes, no, yes, no. Okay. Daniela, why?
I think that we serve the people. If the majority of the people think that we're doing a good work of anything that comes in between, yes.
The problem with democracy is how people in a modern society have become so removed from their leaders, and we've become so detached. It's time to have that attachment, and that attachment empowers individuals, and through empowerment, we can get rid of them. And I think a recall would be a good idea.
Okay.
The last term has seen the most divisive council we've ever had because of the behavior and the policies of the mayor that most of the city does not support. But given that and the desire for some people to recall this mayor, I think whoever the next mayor is would see the same, let's talk about it, Ford Nation, would see Ford Nation trying to recall the next mayor because they're not happy with the new mayor, and so we would end up in this perpetual election cycle, even worse than we have now. It would make things more divisive.
Michael?
I think voter recall is a fantastic thing. I think it makes sure it holds us to our commitments. I think if we get a vote based on a platform, we should maintain that. And if something has to change along the way, then we need to explain that to our constituents and move forward.
David?
No, I don't, Gord. I've been in office and I've been around municipal government for a long time, and I don't believe that having that in place for city council is right. There is an election every four years, and it's not a party system. It's a system where you're standing on your own. You don't have that at the federal level or at the provincial level. So why would you want to have it at the municipal level?
We're now at the closing statement segment of the program. You have 30 seconds for your closing statements. We'll go in reverse order. We went with Danielle with you first. Now we'll go with David, your closing statement, and each of you has 30 seconds. Please go ahead.
I understand what taxpayers want, and I have always been there to deal with their concerns. I'm never afraid to tackle difficult issues, to challenge the process, and to bring results for my community. I have the experience being Chair of the Budget Committee, Chair of the Government Management